We are fresh off of a beautiful reception and launched the beautiful mural. And one of the words that I, or phrases that I loved hearing from the great orators that we heard today, but Adam left me a little choked up was serving as caretakers of our time. That just really resonated with me. But good afternoon and welcome to the Grand Rapids Community College Board of Trustees meeting for Monday, September 15, 2025. I wonder if any of the board members or Dr. Trezenberg have any guests in the audience that they would like to introduce?
I do. Very special person in my life, my mother, is sitting there in the front row, decided that raising nine kids wasn't enough, and so now she works as GRC's, one of GRCC's mast tutors. Oh wow.
Welcome. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Okay. Our first order of business today is the approval of the agenda. Trustees, please note that this is the time to remove an item from the consent agenda for separate consideration if necessary. Might there be any additions, deletions, or corrections of the agenda? May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda? So moved.
Support.
And a second, thank you. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Now we will open up the meeting for a public comment, for a public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, you may do so at this time. Hi there. Right on time. Yes. So come on up. Please note that this is the time that the board will hear comments, I'm sorry, comments specifically related to today's board agenda. There will be an additional comment, open comment later in the meeting that allows for public comment on any matter, and so we'll reserve that one for you. And know that we think the world of your son. That was our opportunity just to expound on the great person that trustee Perkins is, so.
Yes.
Thank you. Later on, we promise to get you up here. All right. So, special order of business, local strategic value resolution. Might we have Vice President of Finance and Administration, John Globocker, Glo Boker, come on up to the podium, and we will hear his presentation and have discussion. Welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the board. President Trezenberg and Amy, it's wonderful to be here. Pleasure to share with you about the local strategic value. The resolution before you is required each year before performance and monthly operation payments are made from the state to GRCC. Usually by now, we would have the final boilerplate language, but we do not have that yet, as the state is still working on developing its budget. Through guidance of MCCA, we have been, have prepared the resolution that's before you to ensure our readiness in the event the submission deadline is not extended beyond October 15th. The local strategic value, beyond just the requirement of the state, it affords the college the opportunity to highlight all of its accomplishments in the previous academic year, so for '24, '25. I enjoyed reading all of the accomplishments that our institution has made in that time. And it also goes to say that there are a lot of individuals that we need to thank and appreciate for their input. On the screen before you are those that were involved in its preparation, gathering materials, editing materials, so that the resolution can be in its fulsome form. To satisfy the local strategic value, the institution must meet four of the five practices in each of the three categories, and those are before you, the economic development in business or industry partnerships, which we satisfy. Category B is education partnerships, which we also satisfy. And category C for community services, we also satisfy that category as well. Just as a reflection, the amount of performance funding that is eligible to the college as of '24, '25 was $15,633. We'll know the eligibility once the state finalizes its budget. So thank you for your consideration of this year's local strategic value resolution, and I welcome any questions that you might have.
Trustees, questions, celebrations, comments related to the presentation? Okay, so, well, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the local strategic value resolution as presented? So moved. So I hear first, or a motion and a second then. Thank you. Might there be any discussion for this segment?
I want to echo John's statement that every year when this comes around, it, I just am filled with pride. I mean, these are, these are the best practices that we have to comply with to get state money, and it reads like a beautiful summary of all the things we do in the community and the partnerships that we forge. So not only thank you for preparing this, but for doing all of the work that provides the services. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Now is the time that we will move to approve the consent items. May I have a motion to approve the consent items as presented?
Support.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed? And the motion carries. Purchases over $100,000, may I have a motion to approve the purchases over $100,000 as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Dr. Trezenberg, the January 2nd, 2026 college holiday, from your seat, might you share a little bit, and we can open it up for a discussion?
Yes, thank you. The 2026 New Year's Day, January 1, falls on a Thursday this year. That means the first scheduled workday of the new year would be a Friday after an extended holiday break. The executive leadership team recommends, and I concur, that the board approve the addition of Friday, January 2, as an additional holiday or shutdown day for eligible faculty and staff. This option has been discussed with the leaders of the collective bargaining units and with representatives of the PMA employee group. They raised no objections and appreciate having the additional day. Memoranda of understanding have been drafted for APSS, SEBA, and PALLC, pending board approval. No MOU is needed for the Faculty Association. This change will be worked into the calendars as part of the final contract language based on the tentative agreement that was ratified last month.
Might there be questions, celebrations, or comments to Dr. Trezenberg about this particular? Peace.
Other than the celebration we're hearing?
I think that was a warning, actually.
I was going to ask, how could anybody oppose this, right?
I think they were reminding us and letting us know that that would not be, that would not go down well. Okay, so then let me move on to this. May I have a motion to approve the addition of the January 2nd, 2026, as an additional holiday, shutdown day for eligible faculty and staff as presented?
Support.
Okay. Might there be additional discussion?
My only question is, is this, no, I'm just kidding. My question is, can we, can we look out and see, like, in three years this happens, and just like plan for that during?
Well, if we knew when January 1 would come each year, we could do that. Yes. Yes.
Just wondering how we plan ahead.
Okay.
And in favor?
And he's in favor. And did we get a second for that?
Yes.
All right. And so, again, all that are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. They are happy about this. All right. And so we're moving into reports, the president's report, monetary report in particular. Dr. Trezenberg, I'm going to point to ask you to just go ahead and take over this section.
Thank you very much. And we'll begin with a bit of a president's report before we get to some of the more specific reports. And we are, of course, delighted to have fall semester underway. I began my role in mid-May and spent three months working with the college staff and faculty, and then in September, at end of August, we get students on campus, and it's really exhilarating to have them here. Klaus, can you advance slides for me? Thank you. So classes began on August 25. Just the week before that, we had opening day in which we introduced the session with faculty and staff returning to the campus with a video that honored the many faces of GRCC from the past into the present and anticipating the future. My remarks that morning were drawn from a book by Professor Beronda Montgomery entitled Lessons from Plants, and it spoke to resilience within community, lessons that she extracted from the plant biology world and then helped us apply to human situations as well. The provost mapped the semester ahead, and then we had a marvelous opportunity to celebrate the Excellence in Education awards. These were given to three individuals, the faculty award to Julie Lackshide, the adjunct faculty award to Chad Seitzma, and the staff award to Marisol Blanco, and I'm so proud of them that I thought I wanted to make sure that you saw their names and faces here as well. And so, congratulations once more to our Excellence in Education award winners. I'd like to give a brief update on fall enrollment. This year, we grew to 12,463 students enrolled, which is a slight increase over our number last year. Of particular note is the increase in enrollment at the Lakeshore Campus, which has now grown to over 1,000 students, and there's rumors of a thousand party out there sometime this fall. Enrollment at M-Tech also continues to grow year by year, as you see there. One thing that we're particularly proud of is the increase in fall-to-fall retention, so students who enrolled last fall and eligible to return this fall. That number went up from 47% a year ago to 51% this year. It's still not where we want to be. Our goal as an institution is to hit 55%, but we're pleased to see this growth. This growth is not accidental. It comes from a lot of work by a lot of people, faculty and staff in many, many offices and units, and their efforts really draw on two of the five overarching principles that drive our strategic plan. Those are-
And that's that, so 55 is our goal? What's world-class? What's the best of the best? What numbers are there? Do you know?
Best of the best is hard to say, because community college retentions are very different than that four-year institutions or research institutions, because we have so many students coming in from so many backgrounds with so many different plans. For quite a number of our students, the plan never was to come and stay, the plan was to come and go. And so our retentions are lower than they would be at four-year institutions. I think 55% would be an ambitious goal for a community college.
All right, thank you.
So, this increase really draws on two of the overarching principles that drive the GRCC strategic plan. One of those is that every faculty member and every staff member is considered an educator, whether you're in the classroom with students or not. We're all contributing to the teaching and the success of our students. And a second overarching principle is that enrollment is a focus for all of us. We're all part of the enrollment management team, contributing to engaging students in such a way that they want to persevere and they're able to persevere. So I really applaud all of the team members that have helped to make this a success for us. I'll give you a brief glimpse at the student body profile this year. 65% of our students are enrolled in full-time, 35% part-time, 56% of our students this fall are women, 43% identify as men. The breakdown of those under 18, between 18 to 24 and 25 years and older is shown here, so we have more 25-plus-year-old students than we have in the past. And the racial and ethnic breakdown is reflected in the next slide. 56% of our students identify as white, 22% as Hispanic or Latino, African-American and Black population identifies 11%, and then others there as well. In my last point from my report, I want to advise the trustees that we've been active in advocating for state financial support. We've had Zoom meetings with most of our legislators from this region. I met many of them in Lansing last Wednesday in their offices. We've sent a letter identifying particular concerns we have about some of the budget proposals that the state is still wrestling with. We remind them that we are very grateful for the base support that community colleges get. We're grateful for the additional programs that Michigan has invested in, the Reconnect program and the Community College Guarantee. But we also make it clear that the state needs to sustain the community college funding for the new fiscal year, and the context for that is that the state budget, as John mentioned a moment ago, still has not been settled, and so we aren't exactly clear on what the state is going to contribute to our budget in the year ahead. So that ends my report, and I'd be glad to address any questions that come to mind.
Dr. Trezenberg, do you see any pushback at the state level against community colleges? Like, it seems like a very bipartisan, popular issue, like, is there anybody saying no, they don't need the money, or we shouldn't give them the money that you're aware of?
Everyone supports community colleges and what we do and our mission, and there are areas on the fringes where they'd like to trim some of the money that would otherwise come to us. The two areas where we focused most in our conversations, one arises from a section in the House budget that intends to put an administrative cap on the salaries for community colleges. And that's a reasonable intention, but their definition of administrative salaries is far too broad, and instead of being 10% of our budget, it right now represents about 40% of our salary budget. And so the consequence to community colleges, the consequence to us would be about $10.5 million if it's not adjusted. I think that's an unintended consequence of how they wrote that section. They didn't base it on a community college budget. And so, once we remind them of the disparity in definitions, they see our point and they say, yes, that ought to be changed. But that will be one paragraph in an 800-page bill, and we want to make sure that they recognize that that paragraph needs to be changed for us.
Thank you.
Others? Appreciate the question. Appreciate the legislative engagement and advocacy. Thank you. So it sounds like we can turn to the monetary report.
Yes. And for that, we'll call Raven Farnham to the podium, please.
Good afternoon. Today, I am bringing the People, Culture, and Equity Report before you all. Just waiting on it to come up. Sorry. And while we are waiting for that, the report will cover the workforce profile, which are the demographics of our current employees, and it will also cover people, culture, and equity initiatives that we have for this upcoming year. There we go. All right, and you can advance to the next slide, please. And one more? All right. So I do have our last year fiscal numbers as well for '23, '24. This is as of June 30, '24. We had 666 full-time benefited employees. June 30, 2025, we had 687. Therefore, we had 21 headcount growth. I do want to point out, though, not included in those full-time benefit numbers are some other employee groups that help us out here. We have our contingent workers. Those are temporary workers that come in that may be here to cover a leave, they might be here to cover extra work, they might be here because we can't, you know, bring in a full-time FTE, and therefore, we bring it in with a contingent worker. And last year, they made up 214 positions coming in and helping us, you know, day-to-day support our mission. In addition to that, we also have 499 adjunct faculty, separate from the faculty number that you see here, that also supports our mission. So that brings us to a total of 1,400 that we support here at the college. If you add in our student employees, that's approximately 200 more, looking at 1,600 that, you know, support the campus. So just wanted to make sure, gave them a shout-out as well. Couldn't go back, I'm sorry. Sorry. And I also just wanted to give some definition to the groups that you see here, and I know most of you've been on the board, but just to kind of refresh your memory of what those different employee groups look like. So you have APSS. Those are our support professionals. They are vital to our departments, and we could not do our work without them. We have the SEBA group, that is made up of maintenance, painters, electrician, plumbers, also custodians that keep, you know, the grounds here and the building is beautiful. Then we have our faculty group, so the professors, educators, the advisors, the librarians. Our PMA, that's Professional Management Administration, so that's all of your other support areas, finance, marketing, HR, IT, anything that probably will not fall in the APSS group would be in PMA. And last but not least, our police, that keep us all safe here. That makes up the different employee groups. And so, again, just like that 687, those numbers that are listed there are as of June 30 of this year. So next slide, please. All right. So the workforce profile goes on to identify by race and ethnicity. So this is as a total. We are about 75% when we look at the demographics, white employees. The other 25% make up various groups of people of color. Second is Black or African-American. Third is Hispanic. Third is Asian, and that small sliver is American Indian, making up less than 1%. The next breakdown is of those groups individually, so the APSS, SEBA, faculty, PMA, police. In the blue, you have white employees represented, and the yellow is people of color, just to give you a breakdown of that. Next, when we look at the gender as a whole, we're almost about 50/50. Females represent 52%, males represent almost 48%. When we take a look at the different groups, though, it does vary. Blue is the female, yellow is the male, and, you know, depending on what group it falls in, it could be definitely a dominant gender there. Look at APSS and faculty, PMA, you see that women typically are the majority. Our SEBA and police groups, the males are the majority for those. When we look at the age of our employees here, we do have four different generations that are represented, and as you can see, that group from '25 to '64, that's, that's for sure the majority. That age range of 45 to 54, it's Gen X heavily represented here. And that actually is in line, if when you break it down for each employee group, it looks pretty much the same. So Gen Z being very small population, and then kind of just ramping up and having the millennials and the Gen X highly represented. Next-
So when you look at that slide, particularly looking at the Gen X, are you seeing that people are staying longer than they traditionally have, so that, or do you expect that number to begin dropping off as people retire?
Yeah, absolutely. And going into the next slide, talks about years of service. And you can see, so, less than five years here, that is the highest group. When you look at all the different employee groups, that less than five years represents the majority in each group. And then you have this downward slope, and yes, so to your point, definitely expect more retirees, just with how long folks have been there. And that same, that same slope that you see there, again, that's represented in each of the employee groups, that same breakdown. Now, I will say, though, for faculty, when I take a look at that, that 15 and 19 is actually the highest for years of service in that group. All right, so, talking about years of service going into employee separations, we had a total of 72. 55 of those were terminations, and termination is just HR talk, means that they either left voluntary or involuntary. And while I don't have that split, I could tell you that is very few involuntary terminations here. And then we had 17 retirements. When we look at the exit interview data, be very transparent, we have a low volume of return for exit interview data, so when we're trying to figure out why people are leaving, it's like less than 20% that return that interview data, but from what we could see from what we get, it's growth opportunities, pay, and remote work, are the top reasons. And the next slide represents what we are trying to do to replace those folks. Over the last year, we had 126 job postings. The interview teams are super busy. They conducted 454 interviews through the third quarter. And just to give you some reference, the year prior, we did 463 for all four quarters. So definitely have exceeded that this year, with also the current 32 positions currently open. So super busy hiring and trying to get folks in here. So that concludes the workforce profile.
Might you remind us or give us your hunches again about the temporary workers, the composition? Might you say those are retired workers or folks who aspire to be at GRCC and seem like the third highest group, highest group? So what type of work do majority of them do?
Yep, sorry.
It's okay.
Majority are PMA workers. They come in and help out, and yes, it's a lot of retirees that come back and help us out. And I will say, those individuals are capped at 28 hours, so they are coming in on a part-time basis, helping out. Now, it could exceed the 28 hours if it's needed, and of course, we will let them do that work. But yes, it's those that have retired and also who aspire, but also some people who aren't looking to work permanently or full-time. They just, you know, have the time, and from time to time, come back and visit us and help us out.
Thank you.
Are there any rules that, like, needing to wait a certain amount of time once you retire before you can be hired by the same institution?
Well, we have it in policy, it's a two-month wait.
Two months?
Yeah. Yep, and that was increased with ESTA that just passed earlier this year.
Are there any departments that consistently you're seeing more of an issue with staffing than others, or you're probably in a staff?
Yeah, there are a couple hotspots, I would say, just kind of the nature of the work. When you think of also FMLA leaves, you know, due to pregnancies, things like that, there are some departments that are definitely having a harder time than others.
Such as?
Our ECLL, that's one that I know, just again, nature of the work and what they have to do, that's having a hard time.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar-
Oh, that is the Early Childhood Learning Lab, so, for the child care.
Thank you. Um, second question, have you, and this might be more for Dr. Liveley, but has there been any kind of like looking at incentivizing completing those exit surveys so that we can get better data out of that?
No, that is something that we have not looked at yet. We have actually switched how we collected the data. Initially, we were having our HR business partners reach out and ask if they would like to have an interview with them, and they were not getting a great response, you know, no one just, them saying no or just not wanting to. Therefore, we switched to a link to maybe make it more convenient, and sometimes it is harder for people, you know, to tell people to their face, you know, why they're leaving. So, hey, we're gonna give you a link if you don't want to talk to us, and that's something that doesn't seem to be working either. So, no, we have not, though, thought about incentivizing them.
Additional questions? Thank you so much.
And so moving on to strategic initiatives coming out of the Division of People, Culture, and Equity. and Equity, we have some things that we're super excited about. One is the Cultural Intelligence Program, also known as CQ. Last week, we had 12 individuals from the college go through a Train the Trainer program. And they have become certified trainers in CQ. CQ is a program that teaches us how to work, build relationships, and communicate across our differences. Super excited about it. We plan to roll this out to staff. It will be an optional training. However, we will have scheduled classes for individuals to participate in. And we'll also have the opportunity for departments and leaders to take their whole department through it if they would like. Next thing that we have on our list is the Culture and Climate Committee. This is something that was formed out of the climate survey that was done in October 2024. Out of that survey, we heard a list of concerns from our employees. Sense of belonging, communication, recognition, you know, all of those being concerns of our employees. And so ELT has done a great job at trying to figure out how they can get in front of staff. They've had ELT pop-ins, they've had town halls. Dr. Trezenberg has come along and done tea time, which are regular written documentations out to the staff on a regular basis. And so trying to get in front of them, answer questions, follow up, close that loop for them, has been the way that ELT has done that. And one last solution that we have come up with is this Culture and Climate Committee. So this is a committee that is made up of employees across campus in all the different groups, all the different divisions. It's about 20 of us. It is co-chaired by Dr. Nikki Smith, who is a faculty member here, and myself. And we are going to chair this committee and get that feedback and create subgroups from our, our committee to work on and communicate back to ELT exactly what it is that the employees would like to see with all those different concern areas. And so one of the first things that we will be doing is implementing poll surveys. So we had our full employee survey, the climate survey, in October 2024. This October, we will start the poll surveys, which will be smaller, shorter, three to four questions, that is built from what we heard on the climate survey. So this will give us time to work in smaller chunks on the, the different issues that our faculty and staff are having. And so we plan to do that on a quarterly cadence, send out these poll surveys to the staff. The climate, the Culture and Climate Committee will get together, we will talk, we will be represented to ELT through Dr. Likely, who's the executive sponsor of the committee, and just work together to resolve some of the issues that we've heard. And then next, just some of the things looking ahead throughout the academic year. Another thing that we are gearing up are Infinity Groups for our employees. Currently, we do not have anything in place. We do have it on the student side, but nothing for our employees. They will be led by faculty and staff who want to start up a group. And they can, you know, get as creative as they would like to be, you know, whatever that employee circle, that employee feedback looks like for them. They are able to come together over a shared interest, you know, whether it's a book club, whether you're a pet parent, you know, whatever, whatever they would like to do. There, there is money set aside for those groups to be able to educate the rest of the larger staff, to educate leadership, to do things with. So super excited for our employees to be able to have that opportunity. We also recently hired a Director of Talent Development to start initiating leadership development. When we think of culture, you know, our, our leadership is so important on all levels, you know, being that face that employees see. And so definitely want to invest in them. And then lastly, employee wellbeing initiatives, you know, of course, we have our EAP. We bring EAP onsite, you know, a few times a year, just for people to talk. You know, if it's a resource that they have forgotten about, or maybe just, you know, don't feel comfortable going to them, we want to bring it here onsite for them. And they just kind of post up in a secluded place for people to go and, and talk to them if they need to. We also have recognition events throughout the year. We, of course, have our annual in April, where we do the recognition and years of service, which is always a fun time. And then just do fun events throughout the academic year as well. So that concludes the People and Culture initiatives for this academic year. Any questions?
Thank you for being so responsive to the survey responses in Fall 2024. And I hope that you will keep us posted on how these things go as you implement them.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And our institutional report?
For an institutional report today, I'm pleased to call to the podium Professor Nick Antonakis, who is the head of the Visual Arts Department. Going to tell us a little bit about our contribution to Art Prize.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much for inviting me to talk about Art Prize. And I have a couple of slides for you. First of all, we have two venues on campus where we're showing artworks by professionals and an alum. So we have the Paul Collins Art Gallery in RJF Hall, and also the Spectrum Theater Lobby. And for the Spectrum Theater Lobby, Jonathan Wheeler was the curator of the exhibition. And for the Collins Gallery, I was the curator of that one. And we want always to provide our students with an educational experience. So we choose the best artworks out there that we can find that have applied to us. And they will make a good example for them of what is professional work that they can follow and they can try to emulate. So I think we have two very, very nice shows that we can share with our community. If we go on to the next slide. We also have a very nice reception planned for Tuesday, September 23rd. We hope to see some of you there or all of you. That would be great. And that's going to run 4:30 PM to 7:30 PM. It's at the Secchia Piazza. And we're going to have some refreshments starting at 4:30. I'm going to be introducing the artists right around 5 o'clock PM. And there's going to be a little write-up that each one of the artists provided, saying something about the work that they're presenting. We're going to have QR codes so that people can follow through a QR code where the artist is showing, either the Collins Gallery or the Spectrum Theater Lobby, so they can walk over right after that and enjoy the artwork in person. So that's going to be really a wonderful time. Hopefully you can join us. Let's look at the alumni and, and current students that are showing in different venues. We have Angela Caldwell at Clear Sky Eye Care on Fulton. And the picture is hiding the name of the next person. Sorry about that. Is there a chance we can get through that? I don't remember them all off the top of my head.
That's okay.
Is there now, Nick?
Oh, it is. Very good. Oh, Vala Marukian. And she's a recent grad. She was in the top 25 last year. So tremendous success already. And actually, we're following up our Art Prize exhibition with a one-person show of her work in the Collins Art Gallery. So that's going to be really good to see. Next slide. Natalie Boltman, a ceramicist at Monroe Community Church. Kendra Hansen must have had other teachers other than myself because I don't remember the name personally. But she's showing at Biofilia Gallery. Kendra Preston at the Art of Life Studio Gallery, and Renee Terriol at Fountain Street Church. Also Amanda Wymer at Happy Cat Cafe, and Wanda Moreno Aguilar, who is showing at the Spectrum Theater Lobby. I mentioned her for a second there. Rick Stevens is an alum from a little while ago, and a very good professional artist that many of you probably have heard the name of. And we know that after the community college, he attended Aquinas College. That's where he finished his degree. And then he became a popular painter in the area. And then he moved out to the Southwest and has a great career in art. And he's showing at Fountain Street Church. So it's going to be nice to see him again. We own some of his work. When we decorated the Cock and Science Center, we bought some of his paintings to decorate that building. And now the faculty who are showing this year in Art Prize. Our photographer, Andrew Caldwell, is showing at DuVos Place. Robert Bertic and Diane Carroll-Bertic, they are a husband and wife partnership and a collaboration of theirs. Photographic collaboration is at Fountain Street Church. Ash Akoyama is one of our adjunct faculty, and he's showing at Collins Gallery. And Matthew Shank, he is a digital artist and faculty who won second place two years ago in digital media. And he's showing at the Collins Art Gallery. So we're very proud of all of our participants. We've had really good success over the years with the gallery having people place in the top 25. We've had a first-place finisher in digital media three years ago. And Matthew Shank, two years ago, a second-place finisher in digital media. So we've got a very nice history of being successful and getting a lot of people passing through our college and looking at the artworks and enjoying what we have to show. Thank you.
Thank you. That's wonderful. Questions or comments, folks? Well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our financial update?
Yes. If John Globocker would please come to the podium to present the financial report.
Thank you for the opportunity. So before you, in your packet is the Finance Update through August 31, 2025, brought to you by the Finance and Administration Division. Do you want to say a special thank you to the team, Paula and the purchasing team, Nat and Todd, accounting and finance, and bringing these materials forward for our consumption each and every month? Within your packet, you'll see an introduction section that gives you kind of an overall highlight of which funds are delivered within the packet itself. What is a highlight that we've added the Auxiliary Fund to the packet for your viewing, which now includes the bookstore, food service, parking, and print shop. Additionally, there are comments that are available for you to receive. Being that we're early in the fiscal year, there are some significant highlights. Of course, Dr. Trezenberg highlighted before around the enrollment, the strong enrollment that we're enjoying this fall semester, having an impact to our financials on the general operating fund. I do welcome any questions relative to any of those variances that you might see. We present both variance highlights for revenues and expenses across the spectrum of funds. And welcome any questions, recommendations for finance updates in the coming future.
Questions, comments, celebrations?
Thank you for the added detail and the added auxiliary. Having them in front of us is, it's very helpful to have that. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Agreed. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so now we will shift and ask Professor Mike Light to come to the podium for the Faculty Association Report, if he has one.
Thank you all. I really wanted to use my time today to talk about a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to thank the Board of Trustees for ratifying the faculty contract. I know you heard a couple of meetings ago from Brett that the process was collaborative and, and informative. And it took a little longer than I think we imagined, but it all worked out in the end. But I wanted to thank both teams personally. Our chief negotiator, Holly Christopher, excuse me, our chief negotiator, Megan Vandermel, our chief and Chair of Negotiating Team, Holly Christopher, faculty members Dylan Carr, Marty Hilliard, who's an adjunct faculty member, Matt Meeks, Megan Cokely, Oscar Neal, and Moss Ingram. I also wanted to thank the administrative team, Brett Meyer, which I think we're missing an opportunity. We could actually take him off the payroll and have him sponsored by Diet Coke. Brett, I couldn't resist. Ann Isaacson, Jason Vincent, Daniel Flammenhout, Nate Lloyd, and Nigel Likely. I especially wanted to thank our Provost, Dr. Sheila Jones. We have a five-year contract, which I know is a little bit unusual. I feel like her presence, her fingerprints, even though she didn't attend all of the table sessions, they're all over it. Faculty could not have a better leader and partner in our academic pursuit. And I want to make sure that she knows that she's appreciated. So thank you, Sheila. I also wanted to use this opportunity as a plea. I've sort of cheated because I knew that you guys were going to have the HR presentation on People and Culture. And I have my own ideas about how we could be better as an institution. And I sort of wanted to share that. And it's related to negotiations. As great as all of these folks are, and these two teams are rock star teams, the reason that we were successful is because we use a process that's incredible. And that process is called interest-based bargaining. I'm going to give you a definition of interest-based bargaining. This comes from the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service. Interest-based bargaining is a collaborative approach to resolving labor and management disputes. Through the process, parties proactively identify durable solutions to outcomes at the bargaining table. Agreements are based on mutual and individual interests rather than positions. This approach emphasizes problem solving and enables mutual gain outcomes. I think a lot about this, that that process that faculty and academic administration use to solve some of the trickiest issues that we face as work groups, has some specific benefits for the institution. And so I've identified a few. If you could humor me for a minute. First of all, I think that interest-based bargaining leads to better and more creative solutions. More information is made available to both sides, so decisions are better informed. Less reliance is placed on past practice, assumptions, or standards that may be detrimental or just not applicable today. I think that the process creates stronger relationships. The parties work together toward a common purpose during bargaining, and that common purpose lingers. It's one of the reasons I can poke fun at Brett, I think, up here today. He's a great colleague. He's an educator. We learn that through that process. It increases respect and trust between the negotiating parties. There's no hidden agendas. You can't have hidden agendas when you're engaged in interest-based bargaining. And it improves relationships more widely in the workplace. I think everybody sees from a faculty perspective, the willingness of administration to walk down that path with us. And that's infectious. It's culture change. People don't like to have decisions imposed upon them. They like to feel like they have a voice in the everyday. So most of these benefits are cultural in nature. They increase trust and collaboration. I guess part of my plea today is that GRCC as a whole follows our lead. I think that the work that faculty and academic administration have done in this contract through the, the adoption of IBB is amazing and not to be dismissed. But I think we need to incorporate those practices and those concepts into our treatment for all groups who have collective bargaining protections on campus. But also, maybe just as important, extend those, the philosophy and the goal of interest-based bargaining to those groups who don't maybe have collective bargaining protections. We're about to hire a new president. And as we think about, you know, the survey of, of GRCC's culture that took place last year, and, and think about moving forward for the next 100 years, if we can do those kinds of things that are outlined in interest-based bargaining, and we can collaborate and trust each other, avoid and we can collaborate and trust each other, avoid hidden agendas, pull down some of these silos that I think still operate at GRCC, and they have, you know, for the 27 years I've been here, I felt really seen by that age, the demographic report up there. But I think that we can benefit from that. That's one of the things that I hope to impress upon any presidential candidate that comes to campus. And lastly, I just want to say that GRCC strives for excellence. We're human. We're a human institution. We're about the human condition. So we'll make mistakes, and we face trials and tribulations, but I think that this place is a pillar of West Michigan. And I say this all the time. I say it to colleagues and friends and students. Community colleges are the pillar of American democracy. And sometimes when it feels like the commitment to those kind of values wax and wane, I think that community colleges continue to stand tall when it comes to taking all comers and helping them reach their goal and moving them forward in a collaborative and equitable way, and nothing feels more democratic to me. So with proper support and focus, there's nothing that we as an institution can't accomplish. So again, I just want to say thank you because the agreement that you've passed for us and you've agreed to allows us to stand ready to serve in the pursuit of American democracy. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do I need to stand here for questions or?
Hold on one second. You all have questions or comments?
Yes.
First of all, thank you for your many years of service to the college.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, for sure. You mentioned the interest-based bargaining, and you're comparing it being better than something. Are you just saying, is there a specific model of bargaining that you're comparing it to, or is it just kind of in general?
I mean, tradition, traditionally, interest bargaining, where two sides come and present their own interests, and they don't really have to think about the interests or collaborating with the other side, is a more traditional format of bargaining. And I think that it's not usual practice for interest-based bargaining to be included in many places that have collective bargaining agreements. But I think that we benefit from it here tremendously, and I'm on a mission to make sure that we adopt those values institution-wide. I think it'd be great for us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other comments?
Okay, that was easy.
Yeah, the harder part was what you did prior to coming up here by embodying the values of IBB. And while it could be missed, the banter between you and Brett, it's actually very symbolic of that value of IBB. So I really appreciate, one, you're being explicit in drawing the curtains back to talk about it and really center how we win from it. So thank you for that. And the pivot is now to President Eldin Chausvich, who is the president of Student Government.
Might you come up? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, interim president Trezenberg, and members of the GRCC community. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to share the important work that student government has been doing this past semester. It's a privilege to represent the student body, and I'm grateful for the support you guys give to student leadership. So this semester, we've had a strong and energizing start. Over the summer, we finalized our planning for the fall semester, and we also continued, we celebrated our continuation of our hunger-free campus initiative. This effort has provided meals to students facing food insecurities and reminded us of the difference that meeting basic needs really can make for success. This semester, we continue promoting those food resources that we have available on campus. We also had a great experience engaging with students during block party and our involvement day we recently had. These events allowed us to hear directly from students, to share resources, and to strengthen our partnerships with student clubs and organizations. Each member of our student government team actually went around to all the different tables to get to know the student club leaders and to start and develop our relationship with these leaders, so that later on down the line, our bonds can be a lot stronger when we meet, like during our town halls. We followed up, actually, sorry, we followed up with a student organizational workshop, providing club leaders with tools and guidance needed to run a strong and sustainable club. Looking ahead, we are especially excited for our early vote day on October 28th. This event is designed to empower students to participate in democracy by registering to vote, make a plan to vote early, and learning about civic tools that extend beyond election day. Early vote day will address these issues, these topics through interactive tabling activities and including voter registration opportunities and civic engagement materials. We're also planning for an event to welcome, and we also plan for this event to be welcoming and celebratory with food and photo booth to encourage participation. We believe this initiative will not only prepare students to engage in the, in next year's elections, but also to instill confidence in them as lifelong participants in civic life. In addition to that cornerstone event, we also, we have other ways we'll continue connecting with students. Our monthly student leader town hall, held every third Wednesday, brings together club officers and student leaders to hear updates, discuss student government, discuss the student government budget, and share concerns that the students may have. These meetings are an important way for us to maintain open communication and accountability with student organizations. We're also excited to be involved in Homecoming Week, where we'll be hosting tabling to connect with students. And at the Fall Festival, where we'll set up a photo booth to draw students in and engage them in conversation. Both are great opportunities to listen to student voices and strengthen our community on campus. We'll also be helping CAB with these events as well. Student Government really values its relationship with the Campus Activities Board and looks forward to working with them and continuing to strengthen student leadership between the both, between both organizations. Through all these efforts, whether addressing basic needs, promoting civic engagement, or simply creating spaces for connection, our goal is the same, to make students feel supported, included, and empowered during their time here at GRCC. We know that when students feel they belong and their voices are heard, they are more likely to succeed, persist, and thrive not only here, but beyond. On behalf of student government, thank you again for your continued support of student leadership. We are excited about the year to come and committed to working alongside of you. Along, sorry, we're committed to working alongside you, the faculty and staff, to create the best possible student experience here at GRCC. Thank you.
Hey, hold on one second. We're so grateful for you. You look like you're about to run to your seat, but.
Not yet. I wonder if folks might have questions or celebrations for him. One, I don't know anyone that could smile so greatly while presenting that much information, so appreciate that and your advocacy for students and all of the great work that you're doing, and continue to see you out in this community doing different things and grateful for that as well. So very excited for you. And again, if there are additional comments?
I have a question and also a comment. I've been following the student group on social media and just want to say phenomenal job in terms of some of the posts that you get out there. You mentioned that you convene every Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month, is that correct? Have you seen any changes in uptick or maybe the opposite of that in terms of participation from other students?
In the town hall?
In the town hall, yes.
We haven't had ours yet. Our first one is going to be actually this Wednesday. Okay. So we haven't noticed anything yet. I believe last year, our last town hall, had a pretty good number of students, but I'm unsure about the numbers at this time.
And in terms of participation of the club or the group, this is, this is still going to be your first, correct?
Mm-hmm. We had a good turnout at our organizational workshop, and I feel like during our involvement day and also during block party, we were able to really connect with a lot of the student or leaders and advertise not only the workshop, but also our town halls as well. So we're hoping for a pretty good turnout, especially at this first one, since we're covering the most important information regarding the budget and any other concerns that they might have. But I think our, starting this year, we've already got a good, like, foot in the door just with making these connections with all these group leaders.
That's great. Thank you.
Now you may go to yours. Thank you so much. Nice job. Nice job.
And next on our agenda is the board chair report. And I don't know, each time I interact with GRCC, I think I just grow more amazed by the characters or the actors of GRCC, and I think even the reception that we had leading up to this meeting just illustrated again the generations and all of, or some of, the great characters of GRCC. So there's so much pride, and you get to see it in the meetings when you all come up and talk about some of the work that you do and how you represent the teams that stand with you and doing the work. So I just have a lot of pride and I'm in gratitude. I want to take a minute and say that I know some of you know that our search consultants for the next president will be on campus, so Academic Search will have representatives on campus this Friday, I believe, all day. Other people can give you more details than me, but it pretty much is an all-day event. So I want to anchor that. I want to give a shout out to the folks who did win the Excellence in Education Award. I think that's beautiful. Love the work of the poll surveys and how we keep that thematic, that the listening sessions didn't just happen and fade away, but we have kept that very much alive. And you'll even see the integration of the most recent listening sessions and the previous listening sessions and surveys embedded into the leadership profile for the next president. And so that gives me great pride that people are listening and integrating that and trying to give it back in terms of where it shows up. So hopefully, hopefully you see that, feel that, and continue to see adjusted behavior in that regard. So at this time, what I'll do is shift to the open comment, where this time we will get it right and say, we'll open up the meeting for public comment. If there is anyone, and we know there's at least one in the audience who would like to address the board regarding any matter, you may do so at this time. And so we ask that you come up to the podium and state your name. I remind you that all comments are limited to three minutes, and the board will not respond to your comments at this time, but I know there's at least one. Go ahead and kick us off.
Thank you so much for, my name is Deborah Perkins, and I am so thankful to be here. I've been a tutor at GRCC, so I'm in one of those little contingency parts and over the 65 parts. Okay, so I'm in that little part down there. But what I do at GRCC, I do because I love, I love GRCC, first of all. We are like a family. And that has been true since day one for GRCC, since I've worked here. And I'm very thankful for that atmosphere, and that's one of the reasons a lot of us who are in that little minority, we do what we do. So first of all, thank you so much for helping be a part of that. And then, I've been a tutor for about 13 years. I started out in the English department, and I went over the dark side and became a math tutor. So, and the reason I did that, I started in an area of what was called The Place, and some of you are old enough to remember The Place, and it was for basically all of the under 100 level subjects that were taught. And that was such a wonderful experience. That's where I discovered I really had a better understanding of math than I thought I did, and so that's why I went over the dark side. But one thing I wanted to say was we have seen a decline in how we are addressing the population that really is scared to death and not very good at math, okay? And that is the majority of our students. So I am concerned because since the beginning of my tutoring, we have taken away all of those remedial maths. We no longer have any remedial maths on campus. Now, I understand this has nothing to do with you guys, it's funding, it has, but even our programs, like we had Fast Track, Bridges, and so on, all of those have also gradually gone away. And so what's happening is we have a massive part of our population that really is not being addressed. So that is a great concern to me. And how can we help our these students? What we have currently done is we have created a lab, so the first math anybody can come into is 107. They have created a lab, which is called 17. They've done that also with stats. But unfortunately, that gives that population that really couldn't meet the grade to be in 107, they have doubled the work, they have doubled the amount of money that is going out for those classes, and therefore, we are really the people that can't afford it the most, the people that aren't able to do that work are really missing out. So I'm bringing that to your attention because that is a big concern that we have. I don't know about the other departments, but for sure math. And the other thing I just wanted to say was, if I can remember what it was, I know what it was, kind of in relation to the population. I am so thankful our community has such a diverse population. I will say that in the last year, especially in the last, you know, several months, we have seen a decline, I believe, in our refugee population and in our multicultural population. And I'm just saying that, just working on the ground level, that I'm not seeing near the diversity of languages, of people coming in. And that was one of the beauties, I believe, of our city, but also of GRCC. So I'm not sure what the answer is, but I just hold that out to you, and I thank you for any part that you can have in upholding that history that we have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll hold space just in case someone else wants to go to the podium for public At this time, I'll ask our trustees if they have any final board comments that they would like to make. Any comments that you'd like to make?
Good job, Mom.
I love it. Thank you, trustees and staff, for a great meeting, and this meeting is adjourned.